All right, welcome to the Prom School's Virtual Board School Improvement Bond Committee. Glad everyone can join us today. So and I haven't seen everyone's on. Let's just make sure we've got it. It's tough to do introductions virtually. So so we're not going to, but I do want the board members who are on to introduce themselves. So Andrew Scott, I'm the School Improvement Bond Committee Chair.
Scott Bailey, Board Member.
Bailey Lowry, Board Member.
Julia Brim Edwards, Board Member.
Rita Moore, Board Member.
I think I saw Amy talk, but she might have been muted.
Can people hear me? This is Rita.
Yes, we can hear you, Rita.
Okay.
Director Constan, I'm here.
Great. So we have all the board except Michelle. Is that correct? Correct. Okay. And then we've got a bunch of staff on as well. Thank you everyone for joining us. We are going to open up with public comment. And so we do have up to five two-minute slots for public comment. Kara, has anybody signed up for public comment?
No, we received written public comment, which I'll send to you guys in an email and then I'll post on the website.
Great. And do we have the capacity on WebEx if anybody wants to do public comment right now? Can they do like star nine or raise their hand or something along those lines? No, we can do that on Zoom.
No, because the public's not connected to this meeting. They're watching on the livestream on YouTube.
Gotcha.
They would have had to check in advance.
Okay, great. So anybody who is watching, who was interested in public comment and didn't check in advance, please submit written comment to Kara and she will make sure that all the board members get it and we can take a look at it. And then I don't miss it. Do we have any previous meetings minutes to acknowledge?
Yes.
Did they come around in the packet?
They were the yes. And it was from the March 12th meeting. And they were on the they were on the board website, the internal site.
Great. Yes. Okay, that's right. So if we could acknowledge the March 12th meeting minutes, any objections from the board for doing that? From the committee, I mean, for doing that? Great. Minutes have been acknowledged. Okay. We have a couple of main topics tonight. We're going to talk about multiple pathways to graduation and bond planning for the future. And on the agenda, we did have bond planning first. We do want to switch that around just to make sure we have some time to talk about the multiple pathways to graduation. The committee does need to make a recommendation to the full board today, if possible. So we're going to start with that, then we're going to switch over to bond planning topics and talk a little bit about upcoming needs in 2020 and where we're headed with that. So I will turn it over on multiple pathways to graduation, I think, to Dan Young. Is that right, Dan?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. We're just going to jump right in. So we're bringing forward tonight the Multiple Pathways to Graduation Master Plan for Review and Recommendation. In your packets tonight, you should have copies of three documents, the master plan report, the staff report, and the board resolution. And tonight I'd like to introduce a couple of familiar faces, I believe. Project Manager Jamie Heard and Principal with the City Architects, Joe Etcheverry, will be presenting that information. Jamie, are you there?
I am here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. And I also wanted to mention that we have Karina Wolf with us, Senior Director for Multiple Pathways. So if there's additional questions, she can help us out with those as well. Do you? How do you want us to do the presentation, Dan? We're prepared to run our own presentation, but I didn't know if the board was doing that. Do you want us to run the presentation?
That is a great question. If you have that capability, Kara, is that right? Is Jamie and Joe able to share?
They should be able to share. Yes.
Okay. Joe's going to run the run the drive the machine here.
You see that screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Excellent. So as usual, we want to start off and just thank our stakeholders and all of the folks that have joined us for a really robust engagement process. Over the past year, we've had multiple design advisory group meetings with teams from Teen Parent Services, Reconnection Services, Alliance at Benson, Alliance at Meek, and the Dart Clinton team. And this, of course, is adding to listening sessions and focus group sessions, which really started back in 2015. So there's a fairly long history of stakeholder engagement and collecting information. I also really wanted to thank Karina Wolf for all of her help and insights and helping us get connected to the right people as we move through this process. So next slide, please. So over the last year, like I said, we've had multiple design advisory groups. We've also gone on a number of tours. We've conducted interviews with staff and teachers and held site observations. And I think, you know, one of the big things that we learned is that multiple pathways is really about personalized study and that the students, the teachers work very hard to provide differentiated paths for the students who are in those programs. They're really focused on the students' learning styles and then also in addition to the academic development that the social and emotional and physical needs of each students is are very much considered as part of the curriculum. Next slide, please. So this is the project schedule for the multiple pathways to graduation. What is mostly of interest is that you can see that brown line, that's the longest line on the graph and that it's that like kind of dashed at one end and the other. The overall brown line represents the Benson construction time period. The multiple pathways construction time period is estimated to be about 18 months long and it will start after Benson starts and it will finish before Benson finishes. But we will be moving all of the students back to the campus in 2024 when Benson is done. So that is just to kind of give you a visual of how this will be managed in relation to the Benson project. Next slide, please. This is jumping a little bit back to the curriculum. So one of the things that we recognized early on is that the use of the building is different than a more traditional high school. And we know in more traditional high schools, students are typically there from about 8:15 to 3:30. And we know that that's not true for the programs that are involved with the multiple pathways to graduation. That what we see is that on a typical day, students are in the building from eight o'clock to six o'clock in the evening. And staff may be there longer, sometimes from seven to eight, seven in the morning till eight o'clock at night. And so this, you know, we really wanted to understand this in terms of the like the design of the spaces and the adjacencies and security and all kinds of things. So this was one of the exercises that we went through with the team early on.
All right. Yeah, thanks. And thanks again to the committee for having us to present. It's always it's always nice to see you again. Really wanted to, you know, as many of you know, guiding principles are developed in the design process to guide our design and be a lens to which we test ideas and design schemes. And this was developed through a number of activities with our stakeholder groups and our design advisory group from all of the schools and programs going into the building. So it really tried to assimilate all of these goals and aspirations into one document. A few things to just point out that are unique to the aspects of the MPG project compared to some of the other more comprehensive high school projects or other schools is really a focus on identity, equity, and sense of belonging for these students. And also, safety and security being a very important topic, it extends beyond just making a secure campus, but also using terms such as trauma-informed design to be able to, you know, provide specific issues or address specific issues around social, emotional concerns, mental health needs, and how can the design of the building help support those those issues? So we developed six ideas or design concepts when we first started this master plan revisit. You'll recall back about a year ago in 2019, we came to the board with a general plan to look at studying the bringing the Alliance at Meek school together with the Alliance at Benson campus. And it was the direction was given to move forward with that approach. Since then, we've we've done a lot of stakeholder engagement, as Jamie pointed out, that included interviews and observations, site visits to other schools. So we really were able to gather more information and have a better understanding of their of needs of each each school and how coming into the same building, they could work together and co-locate. So through that process, we came up with these key considerations. And that the bulleted points here talk about distributed learning communities so that while each school has a connection to the main building at large, they also have the ability to be autonomous and also have their own sense of community within each other. So that was a distinct design aspect. There are some CTE programs that are need to be at the ground floor for access and loading. So that was a critical adjacency and importance. Also, we have a very tight site, so having roof deck and other outdoor opportunities for access for the students and staff to be able to be outside is was an important aspect. And then the proximity and location of each school within the building was another key consideration. Be it the needs of Dart Clinton versus the needs of Teen Parent. And so we had to assimilate all of that information. So as this loads up, what you'll start to see, this is the, and it's a little graphically rich, so it might take a moment to load here. But we're going to look at the site plan.
Hey, Joe?
Yes.
Jamie Constan, just a second. Those considerations around trauma-informed design principles, are those embedded anywhere else in our ed specs or were those newly created just for MPG?
I would say that we didn't necessarily see specific information in our ed specs related to that. We did some of our own research and will continue that research, knowing the importance for this project and for the DAG. So what you're seeing in that document was more of our first, our own research to to help support the kind of their desires and requests around this particular project. But I'm happy to share the research we've done so far and work together to, you know, share any information that we have.
No, just glad to see you very much.
Sure. So looking at the site plan, a few things to first orient you to, there are a few colors on the plan. And the importance here is that they each relate to each of the schools or programs. So first, we have the dark orange color you see in the right-hand side of the page. Those align with Alliance and it includes both the ABC Alliance at Benson Campus as well as the Alliance at Meek. They're all one color. So it was interesting when we started the stakeholder process, they were different colors and it became very clear through the discussion in the DAG, this needs to be one color. We have a unified Alliance that are in the same building. So that is that color represents all of the Alliance schools. The teal or aqua color is the Teen Parent, the Teen Parent aspects. The daycare here you see on the lower floor and there is an office space on the upper floor, you'll see in a moment. The there will be some green colors in the building that relate to Dart Clinton. Blue colors relate to Reconnection Services and Reconnection Center. And then there are a spattering of other colors that are be it athletics in this lighter orange color or gray colors, which are support services and building support such as restrooms, entries, shared conference spaces, food closet, closet and pantry and laundry space, which was an important aspect request. So that kind of orients you to the coloring scheme in the plan. Something else to point out in the site plan is you see these large green trees. The site, this is the parking lot that's kitty corner to Benson and for the southeast and also adjacent to Buckman Field to the left here. Those trees are very beautiful, large oak trees that we want to preserve and maintain. And so it becomes one of the constraints, but also one of the opportunities as we look at citing the building. And then looking at access, so we have 15th and Gleason to the north and then 16th to the east. So it's bordered on essentially three sides with roads and there's a driveway entry to the south as well. So we know that we need to provide parking for the Benson campus. And so that is that access is to the north so that it's adjacent to the Benson campus and it's below the building. And you'll see that in a plane in a moment. You have bus drop off. That's an important aspect for the, especially the Dart Clinton school because they need close proximity for morning buses and in the evening when students leave. And then CTE and loading access, both to serve the building as well as the CTE spaces on the ground floor. And last, to the south, a parent drop off area and some parking that would support the Teen Parent needs, reconnection and other and other. Last, I want to point out the pedestrian access. So you have the main entry to the north with this kind of entry zone and covered area to a shared and a secure vestibule and reception area. The Dart Clinton school is just up on the second floor, you'll see in a moment, and it has the opportunity for a its own stair elevator access in the mornings and the evenings if they need that autonomy and separation at times. And then, as I mentioned, the Teen Parent daycare with its pedestrian and drop off zones to the south. Jump to the next floor here. And I'm happy to go back once we have questions. I'll just want to get through this in a moment. Oh, and I forgot to mention, you probably saw on the ground floor, a high school-sized court gymnasium space with seating for about 400 to 500 capacity. The upper floors, as I mentioned, in the green is the Dart Clinton school on the north and on the second floor. Again, it's nice, a quieter space on the second floor, but also near that inch front entry for easy access to their their space when needed. We have a commons and kitchen space that is up on the upper floor. Ideally, you like to have those on the ground floor for access, but because of the tight site, we brought that up to the second floor. But it also now is centrally located for all of the learning community, so quick access to food and nutrition support there. I want to, this is a nice feature here to the south, we have what we're calling kind of a student support services area. And this is a number of be it reconnection, Teen Parent Office, counseling and other support spaces that will serve all students for the building. And this could be shared support for Dart Clinton Alliance well, so it's not only specific to one one school. And then last to point out on the upper floor, we have a combined Alliance school here with all of the program spaces that are identified for both the Alliance at Benson School as well as the Alliance at Meek. Last plan to show is we're actually now going to dive under the building. We have, being that this is currently a parking lot space that serves Benson campus as well as some use of the Buckman Field, the importance of parking didn't want to be ignored. So that is located on the lower floor. We're providing estimating at about 112 stalls for the Benson campus on this this level with stairs and elevator access. And as we continue the the design of this, this is obviously a very early schematic plan, but we'll be very focused on pedestrian access and safety and security when we think about this. Real quickly, some some 3D views of the of the design, just schematic massing studies. You can see that there are portions that are up on on columns that will provide good covered area for protection from the weather at entries. It also depicts the in the light green color roof areas that will use an indoor-outdoor connections from the the learning communities and the library and commons space. And again, because we have limited site area, we really want to take advantage of our rooftops if possible for the whole student aspect of 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 health and well-being. And you notice here too, you get a sense of the trees on the site. They, I think it's going to be a great opportunity to have, and we cut, that's why we call it the treehouse concept, having outdoor space and indoor spaces that look out into those trees to provide filtered light as well as connections to the outdoors from from the building and really focused on that biophilic design idea. Last, I really wanted to point out, you know, it's early in the design process, but we're thinking about sustainability and how the building orientation and arrangement can support good daylight and access to solar infrastructure for photovoltaic energy and use the most of our one and a half percent requirement. We're also thinking about indoor environmental quality when we talk about trauma-informed design, be it, you know, low no low, no to low pollutants in the building, really having good indoor-outdoor connections. And then it'll even lead into, you know, color and and material and how that can support that trauma-informed design. Here's a really brief summary of kind of an overview of the program. And in your packets, you'll see there's actually, we're not going to go into the detail, but there's a more detailed summary if you want to reference that. Back in May of 2019, this was the total square footage that was included in that that package that was approved. This is slightly bigger, but what what's nice about it is that we've been able to bring in the Teen Parent Office because that was a request and a need to help provide a space for that, being that they're currently at Meek. And so they'd be coming into this building and so that's accounted for as well as back in May of 2019, we had a 5,000 square foot fitness room. We've grown that now to an 8,000 square foot gym and multi-purpose space. So that that was a very strong request and need. And so we've incorporated that into the program. So that's for the, that's the reason for the slightly larger size you're seeing here. And back to Jamie for to talk about our budget.
Okay, back to the budget. So in the first column, you can see the approved budget from last May and then our current estimate. So you'll see that we were able to add the additional square footage and because of efficiencies with Basetti and the design team, essentially keeping the budget the same. It does include a targeted value engineering of 330,000, which is less than 1% of the the hard cost, construction hard cost. And we feel that it's early enough in the program and that was typical design progression. That is something that we can achieve. The the last column, so in your packets and the resolution and the staff report, there has been a request to provide an additional 100 seats in the gym. We currently have 400 seats in the gym, so the request is to bring that up to five. So that is the cost for increasing the gym to 500 seats. If that is approved, we will take that out of project or put take that out of project contingency in our current estimate. So that would be reduced by $476,000. And that still keeps us above the standard of 10% for new construction. And as usual, we would continue to look for opportunities to reduce costs and and save money. But we would initially pay for that out of the contingency funds. And I think that that is most of our presentation for tonight. So are there any questions? I don't know, Karina, if you wanted to add anything, maybe was there anything that Joe and I missed?
I think what you presented was lovely. I think one of the things that, as has been presented is that what has been really important to us is looking at how do we have a building and a facility that's welcoming to an intergenerational constituents and stakeholders with regard to infants that we start serving at six weeks old and Teen Parent Services who are older teenagers. And so we've really spent a lot of time and thoughtfulness with regard to where in the building different programs would come and how we can be really welcoming to community. Not noting exactly what Jamie said, that we really anticipate this building being used more than five days a week and in the evenings. One of the things, just one more thing, one of the things that we have not been able to have in our current space at Alliance at Benson, Alliance at Meek and Dart Clinton is just some really regular things with regard to physical activity and physical exercise. So it's those clubs, it's those sports that we that our students have not had the privilege to have. And so we're really excited to be able to have volleyball teams and basketball leagues. The alternative basketball league is currently at Beaumont. And so for for our students to be able to have a practice facility as well as PE, we also have, as folks know, kids in day treatment in our Dart Clinton school. And all of our students need a lot of movement. So we really wanted to design a building that paid attention to the physical, emotional and social and psychological needs of our kids as well as the academic needs of our kids. So a lot of thought and my appreciation goes out to Joe and Jamie and Brian and everybody and Dan Young as well as all of the people in the DAG. So a lot of people from a lot of programs and from our community. And thank you to Director Brim Edwards, who has spent a lot of time at a lot of DAG meetings, helping us get to where we are. So I just want to say thank you.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. Turn it over to board members. Questions for the for the team.
Director Scott?
Yes.
This is Julia.
Yep.
I just wanted to say that this presentation, I think, was originally scheduled to come to the committee prior to COVID, to be prior to moving to a virtual virtual environment. And at the time, there was a lot of enthusiasm for members of the DAG to come and share their support for the final product. And I know because we're in a different time that you may not hear that, but I want to let people, the board members know that I think the sense of the participants was that the architects and the design team really listened to a pretty diverse set of programs and diverse set of students who had really different needs. And they came up with a design that really meets, I think, very uniquely all the individual needs of the different programs. And so while we're not going to get the public testimony or people coming today to say that, I do know that that was the sentiment in the room, that they wanted the board and the committee to know that this design really reflects the the work and the thinking and the desires of the different programs and the students and parents. So I think that they just did a great job and it's hard to believe that I go back to the days of the Ben, the conversations with the Benson community and all these individual programs that we could be ending up. It seemed at a certain point in time of a either or and that this is actually come up with Benson has a great design and plan and this program does as well. So really great job to the design team and staff who supported this school community and these programs.
Thank you.
Quick question around the proposed expansion of the gym space. So that's more square footage for the gym floor for for students to use and also more seats. Can you talk about the need for more seats and what you heard from DAG members on that?
Yeah, I would say it's primarily related to more seats. So we, the court size is identified as a high school court size, so that wouldn't change. Get a little more runoff in that, but to grow an addition, I can't remember the exact square, maybe four more feet to get two more rows of bleachers was the was the team developed that that cost analysis. And and I think the 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 drive was to provide the extra seating to A, both bring more opportunities for for larger gatherings, not just for athletics, but also for all school events or those opportunities to have an assembly even might be better served with a larger seating capacity.
And I think additionally, Scott, we had a way back in November 2015, the board voted on a part of the master plan that where we deemed student capacities for both Benson and Alliance. And at that point, the Alliance was, we were asked to design a building with shared spaces for 500 students. So it is also kind of tying back to that resolution.
Yeah, and I would just note that the additional seating was much more in line with not necessarily athletics, but also a sort of this a common space where you could have community gatherings. Obviously, in our comprehensive high schools, there's a variety of places that can hold a large number of people and that this this would fill, this space would fill, have a utilitarian. and that this, this would fill, this space would fill, have a utilitarian aspect that would goes way beyond it being a gym, but more the community space that can hold a community.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Oops, who's that? Sorry.
It's Ailey. I just had a question about parking and I think it was 112 spots or 18. Is that sufficient from assuming teachers and staff or what is the plan for additional offsite parking?
So the Benson campus itself in the, in the, in the design does have additional parking, but not, it's a smaller amount than currently on campus. So the intent was to provide this parking lot to serve that Benson campus along with some of the needs of this MPG building. It's important to note too, that currently that lot is open, basically free rein. And one of the feedback we've been hearing is that it's just open to any community, you know, anyone to really park there and sometimes that can happen and parking isn't necessarily dedicated to those campuses. So with this improvement, we'd be able to create more controlled parking opportunity to, and help dedicate that to the, the campus.
I have a pragmatic question of, I guess, probably Dan. And, and Roseanne may have posed this to you earlier today, but we have this scheduled to come to the board at our next meeting, May 26th, which is absolutely packed with our budget proposal and a strategic plan update and a couple of other things. And so is there an urgency around board consideration of this at our next meeting? Or do you think it could wait till our first meeting in June?
Roseanne had gets me earlier today and yeah, we agreed, we were going to move this to the, the first board meeting in June. We should be able to accommodate that schedule. I know the team is looking to schedule a DAG, another DAG, virtual DAG, I believe, for the end of May. So we'll probably still go forward with that. I don't think it's scheduled quite yet. Jamie, you can correct me. But we should be able to move this to June and then move into our official design.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, we'd really like to meet with the team before summer so that we can get, you know, some input for the schematic design phase. Otherwise we kind of miss an opportunity. So we'll probably do that before the board meeting.
And Amy, the only thing I would add, obviously, you know, you can schedule it when it's most convenient. Six of the board members are here tonight asking you questions. So we may be able to consider this sort of board meeting on a very short timeframe. The downside is that we wouldn't get quite as much, you know, potentially public comment or people testifying in favor, but that might be a trade-off in terms of getting it done in the next meeting, but I'll obviously defer to you on that.
That's a good point. We'll take a look at that. That's a good point.
Great. Any other comments before we move on? And actually, we need to take a vote on this. So any other comments before we move to a vote of the committee? Okay, so I think with the committee, we need to make a recommendation to the board. So just a reminder, the committee is myself and Director Scott Bailey and Director and Chair Amy Konstam. And actually, Kara, can you just remind me, I still feel like I've been here a year, but I'm still kind of a newbie on this. Do we officially, is this sort of a motion and second sort of thing or do we just nod our heads to acquiescence?
I think just as long as everybody agrees officially. So it doesn't need to be as formal as it would be in a full board meeting.
I'll second Director Bailey's motion that we forward the proposed MPG design plan to full board consideration.
Great. Any objections from the committee members for doing, from doing that? Since you, since you put it on the table, I'm second and I think we're probably. No, I think we're good. Good. I think this is an excellent presentation. I appreciate you have the update. It sounds like a really good plan. So we will move forward to the board for, to the full board for consideration.
I just want to say it's really exciting. I'm so excited for those to have such an incredible environment. They deserve it.
Thank you. Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Totally bummed to miss the graduation this year. It is, it's the best graduation.
I bet.
Okay, great.
We loved having you last year.
Thank you again. We're going to move on then to the next topic. So we're going to talk about bond planning. And we sort of have this broken down into a couple of different categories of talking about sort of the, the needs and goals discussion. And then a communications update and engagement update, but it's going to be a little bit fluid in terms of the overall time for that. So, but we do have a little less than an hour, a little 15 minutes. I do want to end it at six o'clock. So Dan, you want to go ahead and take it away and give us a little bit of an overview?
I will do that. Thank you. And yeah, with these next topics, they can probably bleed into each other a little bit as well, especially as we ask questions. So at Tuesday's board meeting was mentioned that, you know, with the current economic environment and the impacts of the COVID virus, alternate options have been looked at for the $1.4 billion bond package that had previously been considered. One of those options is a shorter term, two to three year resiliency bond. A smaller and a shorter term bond would do a number of things for us. It would be able to maintain our existing tax rate, be able to address high priority district needs. It would keep our current long-term capital improvement plan moving forward and allow the economy to recover before we consider a larger bond in coming year. So with that in mind, next steps, certainly if, if we are considering a smaller bond, we can't include all of the projects that we previously discussed. And one of the staff's next steps would be to prepare options, some updated bond scenario. So what we'd like to do with our time tonight is hear feedback from the committee members and any other board members to help us inform what those scenarios might look like. And specifically as we go into community engagement, what those options that we would provide to the community for their feedback might look like. So a real quick refresher, in previous meetings, we spent time discussing priority projects, including finishing the Benson and multiple pathways project that we just saw. Educational improvements such as technology, curriculum and specialized classroom improvements and facility improvements, including roof replacements, mechanical systems, among, among others. In your packet tonight, there's a copy of the improvement summary document. This is the exact same document that we had, I believe, was on March 12th. And so it hasn't been updated considering a resiliency bond. But we thought it was a good document to provide just because it identifies all of those educational and physical facility priorities that we packed up before as law, as well as gives some sample budget options. So that's really just there for reference. We might want to reference that tonight. Also want to note that we do have some subject matter experts on the call. So if there are questions about some of these topics, we probably have people that can answer those. And I think I'll stop there and turn it back over to the committee for some input. And just sort of as a starter, a few questions that the committee might want to talk about is for each of you, what is your reaction to the idea of a shorter term resiliency bond? What concerns do you have or what projects or scopes you think should be prioritized?
Great. Thanks, Dan. Yeah, we'll give board members some time to sort of react and put ideas on the table. And I'll just, I'll, I'll sort of second what you said in terms of, of, of the, the whole idea of sort of, of rethinking this and going back and seeing what the critical needs are. I think, you know, in, in a longer view, and we're, we're clearly in the middle of a, of a crisis, right? A crisis that's both health, a health crisis with a pandemic and an economic crisis as well. In the longer view though, you know, the district has a really strong long-term infrastructure plan. And, you know, it's a plan that, that was put in place by previous boards that's been supported really strongly by voters. And is really, you know, it's kickstarted us with the high school renovations, with some health and safety improvements, with seismic improvements, et cetera. And, and frankly, as, as someone who, who also in my day job works on public infrastructure, you know, it's, it's a really, it's a really well thought out and pretty comprehensive plan that does rely on coming back to the voters. And so I think what we're faced with right now, you know, again, pre, pre, pre-COVID, the plan was to come forward, you know, with a pretty sizable package and yet a package that's still kept within that same tax rate in order to make a really significant step forward on the overall infrastructure needs of the district. What we're facing now, I think, is, is also a desire. We want to, if possible, keep that tax rate, you know, where it is. I think that that is something that again, voters have supported strongly. I think they would support again. But recognizing that now may not be the right time to go out with a $1.4 billion package. And so if it is time though, if we don't want to miss the opportunity and essentially, you know, continue on the path, what are those needs? And I think the other thing COVID's really highlighted for us are some of those additional infrastructure deficiencies in the district that we've known have existed for a while, but now, you know, they're really highlighted and that's technology. It's, it's access to technology devices, you know, curriculum, et cetera. And so I think from my perspective, I'm really interested in continuing to explore if we were to do something, what, what those things would look like. What, what is it that if, if, if we were to ask voters to support would make us more resilient as a district moving forward? Help us come out of this crisis even stronger than we went in. And then the last piece, I will say, from my perspective, I think we do need to include the remainder fund, remaining funding for Benson. If, you know, moving forward in, in 2020, that is a really important project. There is, you know, a continuing sort of gap or shortfall there. And I think that would be important to include in any bond that we go out with as well. So that project can, can move forward. With those comments, I'll just sort of open it up to the floor and, and would love to hear from, from board members.
Hey Andrew, if I could kick things off.
Please.
I see no reason to shorten the time span of the bond. If we're keeping the tax rate at the same level, the impact on the community in terms of what they have to pay in taxes will not change whether we go four years or eight years. So to me, I, I don't see the point of going four years. And I'm worried that our plans for rebuilding schools will be set back for years if all we do is finish Benson with this bond. And I see no reason to set those plans back. I think we need to keep the momentum up. So that's, that's just off the top. If, if we're worried about tax impact on people, we would lower the tax rate and I don't think any of us wants to do that.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate those comments and I, I, obviously that's, that's right from an economist's perspective. You are, you are a hundred percent right. I, I'll be really just frank about it. I, I, what I'm concerned about are optics as much as anything else. And while we know that a eight-year, $1.4 billion bond keeps tax rates the same as a smaller four, five, $600 million, you know, two to four year bond. I think that does become difficult to explain. But that said, maybe we can make that explanation. Let me, let me, let me actually ask you this question in response. Is there a reason to pivot a little bit, right? We know the infrastructure needs of the district are enormous. We know they have a great long-term plan, but we're still, we're still 20 to 30 years from really, you know, essentially fixing all of the infrastructure, right? Even with these continued investments. Does COVID in your mind highlight that maybe additional modernizations are not the, the best short-term meaning? And when I say short-term, I really mean like two to three years. But maybe some of these technology investments where we're seeing the gaps might actually be a more important urgent need now given this latest, this latest crisis.
I remain pretty committed to the safety of our students. And we know that means investing in infrastructure. And part of that infrastructure is seismic and ADA. And the best way to do that in many cases is through modernizing the entire building. And if, if we go to a four-year bond, basically I think there's a lot that won't get done along those lines. So you know, part of the reason, and, and also I'm still having a tough time putting curriculum in this package. Because this is our, our, our facility to work on buildings. And we have sacrificed that for years. And so now when we have this backlog, it's, it's going to set us back even farther. That's not a sustainable path. The, the faster that we do modernization, we lower energy costs, we improve learning environments. Those are just as important as technology in the long run. If not more so. So I, I, I don't, I, I'm not swayed that four year is better. And I, I think if we looked at the long-term and looked at what this did for, for the program overall, and it sets this back to me, I think, in terms of modernization, another four years. Then one will have some communities that will be maybe understandably upset. Maybe they understand where we're coming from. But their, you know, their needs will be pushed back another four years. Which means all the elementary schools get pushed back another four years. And I'm just not comfortable doing that. We have a, what, what, it's a ballpark, 30% risk of a really big earthquake coming up. I take that seriously. Right now we have COVID right in front of our face. That distorts our perceptions. We know that from behavior psychology. Let's not lose track of the long-term here.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate the comments.
Scott, I totally hear what you're saying, especially as someone who has worked by your side in the trenches to get our whole modernization program going prior to the 2012 bond. For me, it does feel a little tone deaf to continue with an eight-year billion dollar plus modernization bond, which we already know we were having a hard time squeezing in the rest of our high schools and other strict facilities needs. I do personally find the, the immediate ability to do security, safety and security work and technology improvements and curriculum investments pretty compelling. I don't, I think maybe we want to go around to committee members. Well, I guess I'm the last one because Andrew, you already kind of kicked it off. And see where people stand generally, but I do have a question of Don Wolf and Luis Valentino, whom I think are both on this call about whether they, they're, the priorities in their two areas that they identified when we were looking at it as a very small component of a much bigger bond are still the priorities that they would recommend putting forward for a smaller resiliency bond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, board member, superintendent. The, the priorities have not shifted primarily because I truly, I truly believe that our focus needs to continue to be developing the student learning capacity. And so that, that also includes the adult learning, adult learners in the system. So with the, our ask had been in the initial bond, resources to purchase the math program and also the, in language arts, the foundational skills program that would allow us to work K3. So one of the things that we did was to not try and duplicate across the three budgets available to us. But instead to make sure that when we looked at the bond, that it was for the instructional materials in the core content areas. And then angulate that by using SSA to support the implementation of that curriculum. And then the general funds would be to support the implementation and continued development of the GBC. So with the absence of the bond, then we needed to readjust to only look at two sources. And in decline, right, versus the three that we had originally to sort of connect the dots around the three. But our focus will continue to be the instructional core. And so that's the materials, the developing of the capacity of the teachers to work more closely with the students. And, and to leverage what Don was going to be asking for as we move into a digital district. How are we going to leverage that in supporting the teaching and learning?
And if I can, good evening, directors. Also add to this that, that the entire planning that I had put forward and, and put into the efforts of, of presenting a package for, for even a larger bond was always with the target in mind of what should a 21st century school system look like? What, what should, what should the components be and what are the underlying foundations that we need to have that are healthy, resilient and supportable and sustainable? And those are all still the key components that are in the ask that, that are currently at, at place. So there, there doesn't have to be a, a large amount of retooling from our ask because it was always intended to be part of that longer-term vision. We're just watching it being accelerated because of the current crisis we're in. It prevent, provides us an excellent opportunity to. It prevent provides us an excellent opportunity to capitalize much more quickly because our folks are immersed on that. But there are still issues and underlying supports that we need to address to to be able to sustain this over a longer period of time. So there is there's not a whole lot of of adjustment or changes that need to to take place. When we talk about what shorter term or or longer term bond efforts, there are components that we can probably pull out and wait for longer term. That make a little bit more sense, but by and large, the overall package is has been designed to set us up as a 21st century school district. So it fits right in with a a process of becoming a a digital district.
Hi Chair Konstant, this is Craig. I want to echo what both Don and Luis stated. This is a very, very critical time for our school system, specifically for our students, where we have an opportunity to absolutely move forward and and slowly and slowly reducing the gap in the digital divide and moving towards being a 21st century digital district. E- even beyond the technology, it's so, so important that a a that we prioritize the investment of curricular materials and resources for our students. That is the roadmap and the absolute cornerstone for our students to make sure that they are receiving not only optimal instruction from teachers, but also that our teachers are equipped with optimal resources and updated curricular materials spanning EK12. I just think this is very important and we have a huge opportunity to be able to deliver what is expected of us as a system to all of our children and our families.
And I think to state the obvious, Craig, we also would have little to no ability to make any progress in that area if we're not contained in this bond, given what our budget picture looks like in the next two years.
No, ma'am, I think you said that you you said that that's the truth. I I given to where we're at right now with our with our current budget forecast and and understanding, you know, potentially what this is going to look like for years to come. This is one of the sole golden opportunities that we have to be able to continue our momentum and how we're delivering for our children, and they deserve this. And if if we're not able if we're not able to do that through through this bond, you know, we're we're going to have to be extremely strategic and creative in how we do do that. But just given our fiscal reality, I think we have an opportunity to do amazing thing.
Director Konstant. I've got a smiley face on. Explain to me how going out for a shorter bond at the same tax rate is tone deaf. I I think to make the opposite argument is could be viewed as disingenuous. You were shortening the bond because it hit to the economy. I think instead, we can argue that a bigger bond package means more jobs and more jobs could be a critical need.
I don't disagree with you. I I see your point of view. I'm just, I'm not sure that that I have questions about how politically palatable that would be in this.
I think, you know, we need to talk. When we've been political around bonds, it's been trouble. I think we need to look clearly at what our needs are and make decisions based on those needs and make the case to voters. And not let the optics get in the way right now when we don't have any polling data that I know of. That would suggest going shorter at the same tax rate would be a better option. The other thing is, I I just want to say, of course, our children deserve, you know, more better curriculum. But they also deserve modern, safe, accessible buildings. And this is the only way that we have to get that. And Craig said, well, really, we can't do it through the bond. Well, there you go.
Actually, Scott, I want to jump in on that because I I think it's an important point. I I actually don't disagree with the point you're making at all. To me, I look at it, though, a little differently. We have a a massive infrastructure backlog, as most governments do. Portland Public Schools is not unique in that. That that infrastructure backlog includes our our hard assets like our buildings. It also includes other capital assets like our technology, like our curriculum, et cetera. So what I I guess I want to be, I want to be careful because to me, when we say we'd have to get creative, that's that's true no matter what, right? If if we, you know, if if a bond package fails, we'll have to get creative about how we patch together our 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 buildings, right? Until we can go back out again. If we don't include curriculum, we'll have to get creative on that. I think the larger point is we don't have funding in our base budget to make large investments in infrastructure. We have funding in our base budgets to make very marginal investments in in maintenance, you know, you know, around around a few different things. That's true of our buildings. It's also true of technology. So I mean, I I hear you say that this bond program is for our buildings. That's not actually the way I've thought about it over the years. I've thought about it as an overall, this is a supplemental way of getting money for infrastructure investments. And and I think in my mind, the more compelling rationale is not the tax rate, because you're right, it's the same. Although I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, well, you and I and 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 other people on this call can have this conversation about tax rates staying the same. There is an issue with a 1.4 billion dollar bond when unemployment is north of 10, maybe north of 15% that we might have less of an issue with at a smaller dog. That's just, that's a political reality. But you're right, we don't have polling data. So we're making we're making some assumptions about that. None of us have knowledge of it. To me, though, that's not the most compelling reason. The most compelling reason is does this recent, you know, crisis warrant a rethinking of that prioritization of the overall infrastructure backlog? And that's the way I think about it. For me, where I was six months ago, those buildings that you're talking about was the highest need. Now, as a result of this, I'm thinking, you know what? I might reprioritize something else a little bit higher. Totally aware of the recency bias problem that might be creeping into my thinking and others. So so I, you know, you're not wrong about that. But that's that's for me is the is the compelling rationale. I also want to stress, it doesn't have to be used at four. I actually, in my mind, use this as potentially a two or three year before we go back out again. But it allows us to buys us some time to figure out what the overall economic voter environment is before going back out for our next round.
I think if we went out for two-year, that would be Benson only. And I don't even know the dollars on that. So I would say, I would say we've got two issues going on here. And one is prioritization within a bond regardless of length. And I have, I I've made a one or two arguments about that, mostly around the curriculum. I I get the technology piece and how we might reprioritize that with a bond package. And the other issue is how the length of the bond. And I don't want to mix, I don't want to conflate those two. And and I hear that happening.
Yeah, actually, I mean, I don't think I am conflating them, just to be clear. I mean, I I get it. Those are two different issues. To 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 me, though, there's there's the the two issues we need to talk about are the political issues and then and then the substantive issue. So you're right. You're right. We could, we could go out with an eight-year bond at 1.4 billion dollars and do all curriculum, technology, sort of that side of the infrastructure if we wanted to reprioritize. So you you know, yeah, they are separate issues, but there is an interrelationship. You know, in in terms of of how we how we pitch it. I would love to hear if other board members who are attending our committee would like to weigh in. I'd love to hear some viewpoints.
Director Scott, before we do that, can I just ask a question? Because looking at the the document that was posted that lays out these new options. Just for the sake of the broader community and and for me. Just to understand, we have a nine-page document that I'm just trying to understand, make sure I understand how this was laid laid out because we what we were working with before was those big, long spreadsheets that had sort of, you know, all the line items by category. And now we have, I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure. And actually, before you go any further, Julie, this is the document from February. So this is the same one from February 27th that we we discussed at that committee meeting. And when we went through sort of the long sheet, but then also some of these things.
So clarification, or we this is just a supplemental background, or is half saying if we were to do this resiliency bond that was two, three years, like, here's the things that are in it? I'm just, or are we just like generally reacting to a shorter term bond and generally what we want?
Correct. Yeah, this was just provided to remind people of that conversation we had had and sort of say, hey, here's some of the things that we had talked about at that meeting. Really, this is this is sort of the high-level reaction of what do you think about a resiliency bond and and what do you think about prioritization?
Okay, well, I always have an opinion, so I can do that. I just want to make sure that if I was supposed to be reacting to something there that I would be on point. I mean, it's a great document. I just wasn't sure how it intersected with the resiliency bond. So I I think I'm generally aligned with Director Scott on a shorter-term same-rate package. And while I agree that Director Bailey has a good point that the rate doesn't change, I think we are anybody who thinks they can predict what the economy or the economic environment is going to look like in three years, I I just I think we know enough to know that we have no idea. And I I think that also, and I have seen recent polling data, that we're in a very uncertain time and that even eight years, the same rate, I do believe people will feel that they don't know enough about their future. And this, this, this is not just individuals, but also, you know, businesses that have been closed for an unprecedented period of time and, you know, will they be able to pay their monthly taxes? They even own their facility. So I just think that the eight-year timeframe is a long time for people to make a commitment. And I do think that will have an impact, even if even if it's the same rate. But I do believe we should go ahead. I think that's with a bond. And if I just the individual components of the package, I, you know, strongly support health, safety, accessibility, security, seismic, sort of a a package of what's doable over the next couple of years. I know there's a limit to actually physically what we can do in a shorter period of time, so that's not going to be the biggest component. But, you know, definitely something I think parents in our community will support. And lots of we've got lots of polling to show that. I think we also agree with Director Scott on the completion of Benson, and that would be also just to note the multiple pathways for graduation building that we just discussed as well. You know, never, never before have we had such a compelling reason of upgrading our technology infrastructure. So check on that. On the curriculum, I was supportive of having it in this longer-term package. My question now would be, you know, do we, you know, since if it's a shorter period of time, do you actually, instead of jamming the same amount into a, you know, two to four-year package? Do you have a smaller increment just because you have a smaller bond? So that would be just a question I would want the academic side of the district to weigh in on. And then the one thing that I would want to have a discussion about before they're they're dropped is, and this is sort of within the lens of the equity lens. You know, we still have six or seven K8s with inequitable programming in outer the outer east side. It's not a it's not a big number, but there is a cost to converting a building back to a middle school, and we'd want to obviously use capital dollars instead of operational dollars. We have the question of Tubman. If we know what we know about the air quality outside the building, are we okay with for another two to three, two to four years of leaving the building there? So just a question. And I think finally, you know, I accept that if you go for a shorter time period and go for 1.4 billion dollar bond, that excludes the the big high school projects. And if there is any sort of discussion of moving any of them, I would if if I had to sort of sequence out, you know, as we continue doing them, I would put Jefferson in sort of the the next up and is if there's an increment of a project that we could do to based on a polling, I I think that 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 building is, it's a dump. And I think it sends a message to our students. It sends a message to all of our students, but in this school that I think has felt the sort of sting of lack of investment over the years and support that if if we were going to, if we had the ability to put a high school in, that's what I would support about. But directionally, I'm aligned with a shorter shorter-term resiliency bond.
Great. Thank you.
It's Andrew, can I? So I I do think that a two-year resiliency bond is makes the most sense, given sort of the uncertain economic future. And I know it'll be the same tax rate and but I think saying we're looking for 1.4 billion over eight years would still be hard for the public right now. And I also think that, based on my call this morning with Anthony, so that things are going to look really different in the fall and things are going to look really different for a while for us. If you watch the governor's press conference today, you know, she's saying no football games until after September, or if there's games, fans won't be in the stands and school's going to look different. And all of that is going to be really challenging. And so I think we're going to have to adapt the way we deliver education services, and so this bond will help us to do that. I do think that we have the three high schools and this sense from the community that they're, they want renewal, but also that, you know, we've heard feedback from the other principals that it's vitally important that we do all of our high schools. And so I would like us to, if we do this two-year resiliency bond, to really consider what kind of statement can we make to the community saying this is a two-year short-term bond? The next up bond will be bigger and will include all three high schools. Or some sort of like clarity around the plan so that people don't feel like we're getting delayed again, but to know that PPS has a strong vision for updating all the high schools. We have a strong vision for doing the seismic, like you mentioned, Director Bailey. But that right now, for times such as these, the thing we most need is technology and curriculum. Because we know that even though, you know, this COVID will pass, but when our students come back, we will need, you know, that really strong curriculum to help pull those kids into that next you know, to pull them back up to where they should be after this really disrupted kind of time of the pandemic. So that would be what I would be most supportive of is a two-year kind of emergency bond, as it were, to deal with the emergency we're in. And then that announcement of sort of plan is to go forward to provide that community reassurance.
Great. Thank you, Ailey. Rita, did you want to comment?
Rita, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay. All right, I'm getting I'm going to hang up on the phone and try to do this through the computer.
You sound great.
Okay, can you hear me? Yeah, all right. So I I think I think we've got a number of questions that and the question keeps changing a little bit. So it seems to me that we're looking at a dollar figure, a duration of the bond period and the bond package. And those are those are three distinct things. So I'm hearing in terms of the duration, it was a it was originally pitched as a four-year bond. Now I'm hearing it might be a two or a three-year bond. So that would need some clarify, I need some clarification on what exactly we're talking about. And the, so the money, the, the actual dollar figure. I think, I mean, I, I don't disagree with, with Director Bailey that when, when in the past, PPS has been kind of obviously attentive to the, to the politics and the optics of a bond issue, that it generally has not ended well. But I also think that we can't be unconscious of the, the change in the economic situation that's happened in the last two months. So it would be nice if we could get some polling done. I don't know if that's possible. But I think the most important thing is that in order to kind of maintain the momentum, we have to, we have to come up with a bond and a bond package that will get voters' support. And, and it, that just is what it is. In terms of the bond package, I have to say, six months ago, what I was advocating for is basically what we're now looking at. I, I started off thinking that we needed to have the next bond focus on infrastructure in terms of the, the kind of major systems, like HVAC systems and schools all over the district, the, the technological infrastructure, our instructional infrastructure. So and and at the time, I don't think that was a majority view. So from where I sit right now, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the renewed interest in infrastructure investments. I don't know whether calling it a resiliency package is really going to convey what we're talking about. But, you know, we can talk about that. But I do think it's critically important that that we pay serious attention to infrastructure at large. I think the digital stuff has become more obviously important with the, with the beginning of the distance learning. But I mean, I think of it as, as more than just providing digital platforms for, for distance education. I think it's also worth noting that we need to make sure that the administration of the district has the, you know, the, the tools that they need in order to do the day-to-day business of running a 1.3 billion dollar enterprise. And I don't think they have it right now. And I think it has, in the past, shown up in lots of different ways. You know, the, building the budget and doing all of the HR work to hire people has been, as I understand it, incredibly onerous. And it's contributed to the fact that EPS has, has been generally so far behind the curve in, in going out and recruiting staff. So anyway, I, I'm in favor of the, of the new focus on infrastructure investments. Whether, whether we can, whether we could pass a 1.4 billion dollar bond, I think that is very much an open question. And, and for my money, you know, it may be a great idea. It, it could be the ideal, but we, we are not in ideal circumstances. So we just have to, we have to be prudent. And, and I think we do need to maintain the momentum. So there you go. I, I do have one question.
I also think.
The question is, do we, do we think that construction costs might decrease as a result of this economic downturn? I mean, not knowing anything about construction beyond what I've learned from being in the board and paying attention. My question is, so it seems plausible to me that construction costs may decrease. And if that's the case, if we, if we do this smaller bond, would that mean that we would not be able to take advantage of opportunities for a changed construction environments? And, you know, over the next four years, five years? Is that, would that be an opportunity that we would lose?
Great. So actually, we're going to, it's a good question, Rita. I want to, I can speculate. Am I muted? No, can you hear? Oh, you don't have your headphones in. The, no, I think, no, I think it's a really good point. And, and I could speculate, but actually, I think we'll send that back to staff because I think it'd be worth consulting a little bit with sort of what economic forecasts are going to be moving forward. I want to, I want to pivot. And I know, Amy, I know you wanted to say something, but we have about a little more than 10 minutes left. And I actually want to pivot off of both, both Rita and Scott's comments, because I think, I think they make a lot of sense in terms of, Scott talked about sort of the two different issues and then Rita reframed it as three. And I think that's a really good frame to think about it. There's the overall dollar figure. There's the, the overall duration that there's what we include. And, and I think one of the key things, what we wanted to come out of this meeting was get a sense from, from board members where they are, which I think, I think we've got. We want to now spend some time, and time meaning, you know, the next, you know, month or two, doing community engagement. And really hearing from the community about what, what are their priorities? What are they, what are their concerns? What do they see the needs are moving forward? And then that will help inform us, right, as we come back and finalize what it is that we do. So with that, I want to pivot to Courtney, who's going to give sort of a brief presentation and talk a little about communications update and engagement update. And she promised she had a relatively short presentation and then we'll leave a few minutes at the end for any closing remarks and we'll try and end the meeting on time. Courtney?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. So yeah, I'm going to be pretty brief. I just want to give you guys a sense of what is sort of next, next in line after tonight. So you have kind of a sense of, of all of that. And then open it up for any questions. And, you know, obviously we're all available, but I have a weird echo. Hold on a second. Okay. Can you hear me? Good. No more echo. Okay, so what we're planning next is a work session, likely on the 19th, although that's still being worked out. So it's not on your calendars, I don't think yet. But that work session is meant to allow some time to review staff draft, draft options, which obviously are informed by this conversation here, which I think has been a really good conversation. Thank you all for being so thoughtful and having such great questions. And then a part of that would be to discuss how those draft options would affirm our vision and racial equity goals. We always want to be mindful of the work that's been done to get us to where we are now. And we've put a lot of work into the vision and to outlining our racial equity goals and our res J lens. We want to review a more detailed engagement plan, which will include ongoing stakeholder calls to gauge support and feedback for this proposal or these, these ideas, community survey, which we would release likely in late May, and a virtual community town hall or multiple town halls, also in late May or early June, likely while the survey is still open. And then we will also, during that work session, review a communications plan with you all. Following that, we, or I guess I should say, the, the desired outcome from a staff perspective of the work session is to discuss and affirm all those things I just said, so that we can move forward on bond options for engagement and input from the community that will ultimately inform the board decisions in June or July. I think this has been mentioned before, but we don't have to refer a measure to the, to the ballot until August 14th. So there's some time over the summer to get this right, but it is a very condensed timeline. This is going to be tight. So I just want everyone to know that that's that ultimate deadline is August 14th, to refer it to the ballot with ballot language, ballot title, all of that. So next step, work session. And then we'll do some work to put options out into the community, have a survey, have some town halls virtually, which I think are working pretty well from what I'm hearing from others. But, you know, it'll be a whole new world of engagement. So I'm open to questions. I think Scott is on the call. There are others on the call that can help answer any questions, but.
So just to comment on the, from a, the campaign perspective, I think there'd be a big advantage to trying to move earlier than, I mean, as early as possible. Just, you know, getting the infrastructure, not just referring it, but, you know, right after the, the deadline, there are all the voters pamphlet statements. And also just building a coalition. In addition, just given it's a general election, there'll be a need to raise funds. And I think we have a modest and realistic, you know, goal of what we've raised, but there's going to be, I think, competition on the ballot and it's not going to be cheap because of just the turnout. So I would really encourage us to, to the extent possible, try and get our, have full community input, get our work done earlier rather than later. So the campaign has an opportunity to really get built out and be ready to hit the ground running in the fall. Just, it'll also be more expensive because I can't imagine there's going to be the traditional tool, less expensive tools like canvassing are not going to be available. So just throw that out. It'll be an unconventional, my guess is it'll be an unconventional campaign, just like the May elections have been.
Distance canvassing, Julia, distance canvassing. Um, great. So Courtney, just so I, just to recap what I, what I think I heard you say, we're trying to get, we're trying to get a work session scheduled, maybe on the 19th, although it's not on people's calendars yet. And then staff are going to bring some more refined options based on this conversation today about what that might look like. Okay.
Just one more quick thing. We're going to work through some of those options through our equity lens during that meeting. And then also I wanted to just correct myself. I said referral on the 14th. That's actually the filing deadline. We would have to refer it. You know, the board referral, board vote would have to be before that. The 14th is the filing deadline. Just nuanced, but I want to make sure you guys know that that is what that date means.
Great. Okay. Any, any thoughts or concerns? We heard Julia in terms of, of finding that balance of engagement, but then also making sure we're out there early enough. Any other, any other board members have any questions for Courtney about engagement?
Well, I have a question for Courtney. A question for Courtney, but a question overall that I'm still trying to figure out from comments made from other board members. And I appreciate the discussion. What specifically in terms of our ask would have, would change from before that's around our technology needs? And, and teaching through technology? Because I, I mean, if that's a compelling case that we need to make, I, I haven't heard that articulated from staff. So I'd want to hear that from Craig and Louise going forward and, and others. Are, are we going to focus, would we focus some if we put curriculum money in there along with technology? Would we focus on online teaching tools? Are beeping that up and which would be, I think, different or a, a bigger emphasis than before? So I would want that to be part of the discussion, which is both, both for our own internal use and also for how we talk about this with the and totally agree with Julia, the sooner we get this going, the better, campaign wise.
Amy, did you have a comment or question? Amy, if you're talking, we can't hear you. All right. We may have lost you. Jump back in if you're still on here. Any other board, other board members?
I'm sorry, Andrew, was that a call out to me?
Oh, yes, it was. Yeah. Any, did you have a question or a comment?
Here's the only point I was going to make earlier is that I do see a two or three-year bond as a hybrid. It, it gives us the ability to still communicate with the public about our long-range plans and what we hope to achieve. And yet it gets us to be really narrow in identifying what our immediate focus is going to be. So that's the advantage that I see in that.
And I think it'll be important at our, at our work session, when it gets scheduled to, to have that explicit conversation. Because I think Scott, you know, we've had some informal conversations with staff, Scott and others who asked this question. You know, and, and there is a lot, the district has quite a bit of flexibility right now, particularly with the bonds that we just did and, and how to schedule things out. So there is flexibility, whether it's a two-year or a four-year or an eight-year bond in terms of, of, of the dollar amounts and, and when we sell bonds in order to maintain that tax rate. So I think at our work session, we can dive into that a little deeper. Make sure that, make sure we understand sort of the parameters around those options.
Director Scott?
Sorry. You can call me, you can call me, Andrew.
I think the other thing, and Julia brought this up, is I think it would be good if we decided regardless of the bond financing, the bond timing, is if we're looking at high schools going out, you know, at some point in the future, that we would come up with an order, which, which, which would come first and why? And that would be very clear about the criteria that we use to make that decision. And I, I think doing that would say, hey, regardless if it's two-year, four-year, eight-year, whatever, this is kind of sort of a sequence expectation going out.
Yep.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I, I think, I think talking about the criteria for that, you know, I might come back to, to a point that Ailey made earlier that I, and, you know, having, having spoken to a couple of principals in the last couple of days, you know, the, in, in my mind, there's still value, right? And, and there's value, particularly if we sort of shake this resiliency bond of, 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 of still going back to the community and, and being committed to that long-term plan that we put in place over a decade ago. And so for me, I, I, I think I hear what you're saying about, about order. I would be really interested in sort of talking about how we aren't, we're pivoting a little bit right now in the short term, but still are committed to the long-term plan of finishing the high school project that we started 10 years ago. Because I, I think that's going to be really important. I can, I can tell you in, in, in my zone, that's going to be really important for building support for any, any sort of bond package. And we already were hearing that even at the 1.4 billion, you know, we were having really frank conversations as a board about whether Wilson would be able to be included or not. And that was generating a lot of feedback. I, I think now if we pivot away from that in the short term, we're going to get feedback from all three remaining high schools that are, that are, that have not been modernized. So I think, you know, as a, as a district, what's the message we want to be sending to voters and the community? You know, moving forward, I think is going to be really important. So I'd like to continue that conversation as well. Any other final thoughts from folks before we adjourn?
Just look forward to the next iteration of this conversation.
Yeah, just good discussion. It gave me a lot to think about as well. Which I appreciate.
Yeah, I really actually appreciate this. I think this was a great conversation and I appreciate sort of the diversity of views that the board's bringing. And I think underlying it all, we're all very committed to the district moving forward with the infrastructure and, and, and it just comes. And, and, and it just comes down to these, these key questions, right, about sort of the dollar figure, the duration and, and priorities in the package. So we'll continue the conversation at our next work session and then we'll get some community input that's helping form this moving forward as well. Thanks, everybody, for your time. Yeah, we, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.